Okay, good evening, everyone. We're going to begin the Planning Commission meeting. So today is Wednesday, June 25th, 6:30 PM. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mary Beth, would you please take roll call?
Juan?
Yes.
Hi, Swiler.
Here.
Hi.
Here.
Juan again.
Here.
Juan.
Okay, with that, we have the establishment of a quorum. Next item of business is the approval of minutes, which is 25 PC-16, approval of the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting on February 24th of this year, and the joint meeting of the Planning Commission, the Historic Preservation Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals on April 2025. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So.
Second.
All right, very good. Mary Beth, would you call roll?
Hi.
Here.
Juan again.
Here.
Juan?
Yes.
Hi, Swiler.
Yes.
All right, very good. That being said, we're going to go ahead and begin with the next order of new business, which is 25 PC-17, the presentation by also Levine. And we're ready whenever you are. And for everyone in attendance tonight, this is Carrie that will be presenting to us. So, thank you, Carrie.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for having us. And I'm very excited to present to you the final draft or consideration of the comprehensive plan. Is it all the way plugged in up here? Yeah. Is it all the way plugged in up here? Yeah. You kind of put a second. Yeah.
You tried the button on there, see here?
I did.
Remote with one HDMI.
Yeah, and I tried that one.
It's a technology marvel. I was gonna say, you can unplug that and try to...
Just hit it on the side and...
Would you aim it where?
Everywhere. At where? There?
Yeah.
Well, while we're waiting for the technology to catch up, my name is Carrie Capoban. I am with House Levine, and thank you again for having us this evening and for allowing us to guide you through this process of updating the comprehensive plan. The agenda that I have for my presentation is to go over the planning process and a bit of the outreach and participation that we had throughout the process, and then give a brief overview of the final document itself before kind of getting the next steps for the process. So there are a few sections of Illinois statutes that are related to the comprehensive plan. Essentially, it's saying that the city has the authority to adopt a comprehensive plan, what the elements can be. Its advisory doesn't regulate or control the use of private property. That's actually your zoning code. Your comprehensive plan identifies future land use categories, and where those are appropriate for the city. Statute also allows you to plan for one and a half miles of contiguous, unincorporated area around the city boundaries, and the plan must be publicly available, according to statute. So every municipality may create a planning commission, or a planning department, or both. They can prepare or recommend the comprehensive plan. Plan may guide public improvements, like streets, parks, utilities, zoning standards, and designate plan for annexation. And planning commissions can recommend changes to the official comprehensive plan over time. These plans are intended to assist municipal officials in executing projects aligned with the comprehensive plan. That's actually what statute says. There are also additional portions of statute that are related to the Local Planning Technical Assistance Act. Those include public involvement, land use, housing, economic development, transportation, and community facilities, and parks, natural areas. So even though this was not part of a local planning technical assistance project, we did incorporate all of those elements within this process. So we started out with our kickoff back in October. We had a couple of different opportunities for different groups to come and talk to us. We had focus groups. We had a community visioning workshop that was open to the public. We met with staff. We met with department heads. We had online engagement through the project website, through an online community survey. We did have a separate survey for community facilities. And we also had MAP.Social, which was an online mapping program that allowed folks to kind of participate through dropping things on a map and providing comments that way. So there were three steps really to the planning process. Establishing where we are, and that was back in October. We did our fact-finding. That culminated in an existing conditions memorandum that established the baseline of where Galena was at that time. Then we had to establish where we wanted to go. That was with the visioning. That was part of the visioning workshop through the community, and part of the vision statement, the goals, and the future land use map that was presented to the planning commission. And then the last step is, how do we get there? And that is with the draft comprehensive plan elements.
Try the main HDMI button. And then the center button on the bottom. Can we pull up the graphics coming up? Pretty visual. We'll go back to FPTV.
Go ahead, Carrie.
So the "how do we get there?" was part of the draft plan elements that were also presented to the Planning Commission, the Historic Preservation Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals back in April. And now, the final portion of it is the draft of the final version of the comprehensive plan. And that's what's before the planning commission tonight in order to determine if this is something that you would like to approve moving forward. So as part of outreach, again, we had a department heads workshop. We met with eight folks from the city. We had a planning commission workshop where we discussed the process and went through that four-question exercise with all of you. There were 27 people in attendance, including the planning commission. We conducted focus groups and heard from 51 individuals representing various different groups, including business owners and resident. We had a business community workshop, excuse me, that was dedicated to listening to what the business community in Galena had to say about kind of going through that same four-question workshop that the planning commission did. We had 22 in attendance there. The community visioning workshop itself had 22 folks in attendance. We had 122 folks fill out the online community questionnaire. We had 37 points that were dropped on MAP.Social, and we've had over 40 people at tonight's open house. So overall, we've had over 300 points of engagement throughout the process. So at its core, the plan is a foundation for decision-making. It tells community's story. It shares the city's vision. It's intended to evaluate and inform development proposals. So anytime the city is going to review a development proposal, anything, anytime somebody wants to come to the city and develop or redevelop something, they will use... They will use this plan in order to make sure that it is compliant with what the city's vision and goals are. It's not the zoning code, but it does form the foundation for your regulatory framework. So once this comprehensive plan is adopted, the next step in the process is to really take a look at your zoning code and your ordinances to make sure that these two documents are speaking to each other and that they're supportive of each other. The zoning code is really intended to make sure that you can implement all the recommendations and the goals in order to achieve everything within the comprehensive plan. This plan is also going to be used to coordinate local and regional initiatives. There might be a project that you'll need some partnerships on, and this can help identify who those partners might be and what those projects might be, should they be considered. This also supports the capital improvements and yearly budgeting. So if something is identified in the plan, you can start putting that into your budgetary documents and start planning for those short and medium, long-term, as they're ongoing kinds of projects. Excuse me. Help identify additional funding sources. So oftentimes, whenever you're looking for grant funding... Whenever you're looking for grant funding, often one of the questions is whether or not there is a comprehensive plan and if the project is in alignment with the comprehensive plan. That's kind of the community's support for the project. And that strengthens your application and may lead to actually being awarded those grant funds. It can also help identify future studies. Now, the comprehensive plan is not going to be all-encompassing. It is not going to be, for instance, the parking plan. It will identify future studies that will need to be a little bit more involved, a deeper dive that will need to happen. That will be a next step for this. And the recommendations, therefore, are within the comprehensive plan. And of course, it's intended to inform and educate the community. It's fantastic that we have so many people with us tonight who are interested in this plan. This is exactly the type of thing that we'd like to see. This is something that we want to... We like to say, "This is the city's plan. This is not our plan. We helped you kind of craft it, but we want to make sure that we're reflective of the community's goals and desires." So part of the plan outline, we have... What's showing on the screen right now is the table of contents. So it starts out with these elements here, and the first couple of chapters are really just laying the foundation for the plan itself. Chapters 3 and 4, the vision and goals, and land use and development, are really the plan framework. That's what everything within the plan is based off of. The chapters themselves are the core of the plan. So we have economic development, housing in neighborhoods, transportation and mobility, and community facilities and public infrastructure. That last chapter also incorporates parks and open space. And then finally, implementation. We also incorporate an action matrix to help you folks kind of keep track, excuse me, of the implementation action items that are within the plan itself. What those... What kinds of priorities and timeframes for those are, and potential partnerships. So what does the plan framework do? It sets the stage for the rest of the plan. It establishes where we want to go. So you have the kind of, again, foundation, the introduction, establishing that baseline, going into the vision and goals, and that sets the stage for the rest of the plan itself. Everything is based on achieving the vision and ways to implement those goals. And then it goes into the future land use map. So we have a vision statement. Whoa. There we go. We have a community vision statement, and this was really based on... I know it's hard to read on here, and there's a couple of paragraphs, but it was really based on the outreach that we did and the feedback that we heard. It was also based on observations that we had from our time here. And this was vetted through the planning commission, and we worked with staff in order to come up with this vision statement that was reflective of everything that we heard from the community. The goals were also based on what we heard from the community, and they're in several categories. So we have nine goals overall in land use and development, residential areas, commercial and industrial areas, transportation and mobility, and then community facilities and public infrastructure. And the goals are in this section, but throughout, we do have recommendations in order to achieve those goals. Next, we have land use and development. And while there are some categories for additional information, really, the future land use map is kind of the foundation for identifying what the areas of Galena will be in the future, what would be appropriate in the next 20 to 25 years as we move forward in development redevelopment. So we did work with staff on a couple of refinements to the future land use map. That was in response to comments that we received from that last meeting with the planning commission, the Historic Preservation Commission, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and also public comments that were submitted following the last meeting. So those were refined with staff input to get to the land use map that's on the screen. There was a question at one point about what transitional residential really means, and we tried to make that a little bit clearer and just kind of give a little bit more explanation of what we intended for that to be. So transitional residential areas are those higher-density residential neighborhoods that feature small-scale, single-family, two-family, and multifamily housing, but is reflecting the... The architectural heritage and walkability of Galena's historic core. So these are near downtown and along Galena River, but they serve as a bridge that is between the both historic neighborhoods and the broader community. And while new development opportunities are limited in these areas, context-sensitive infill and redevelopment are what we are promoting within those areas. So that would include investments in adaptive reuse, historic renovations, and also pedestrian-friendly infrastructure. We also created a downtown improvement framework. So this is the first step. It's a little bit hard to see. But really, what we did was, we took a look at the areas of downtown and provided some recommendations on things to consider for future activation of the space and expansion of the downtown area. We also refined this based on a discussion with the planning commission, Historic Preservation Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, and staff. Moving into the chapters themselves, we have, again, economic development, housing in neighborhoods, transportation and mobility, and community facilities and public infrastructure. First thing we'd like to highlight in economic development, we had a revision that was based on an opportunity for potential light industrial or business park use. This was something that we had discussed with staff recently. This is in alignment with prior zoning for the property that is now identified for that potential light industrial area. And this is really kind of reflecting the capacity of the existing industrial park to accommodate a large user or set of users. And this is intended also to create an area that would be more of like a campus-like setting. So your zoning code can do things like address site design, offers and landscaping, and building design to ensure compatibility with the surrounding area. And it's been identified... We've also identified, due to this change, an additional potential location for a daycare facility that we have on there as a... In addition to the event space location. So before I move on, I just wanted to say, ask if there were any questions with regard to this change.
I didn't sign up. Can I ask a question? Because I didn't sign up and I didn't ask a question.
No. Yeah.
Within the economic development chapter itself, we also have several recommendations. Some of the highlights include diversifying the local economy to balance what the city currently has and the tourism aspect and kind of adding on to those services in commercial areas that are desired within the community. Also looking at opportunities for workforce development. Recommendations include partnerships to kind of facilitate internships, apprenticeships, training, and those kinds of areas. Also, one of the recommendations is to implement a business attraction and retention program, and take a look at potential incentives to kind of attract the types of development that the city is desiring. Also taking a look more at the site level, at internal access and circulation to kind of relieve some of the traffic congestion and some of those issues that are existing, and reviewing the existing corridor design manual just to make sure that that's still reflective of the type of design that's intended to be pursued moving forward and encouraging housing in the northwest portion of the city. For housing in neighborhoods, we have also a residential framework. And a few of the highlights of the recommendations that we have within this chapter include continuing to preserve the historic areas and structures within the city, promoting tax credit programs and neighborhood beautification, and also taking a look at the existing websites to see if there are any ways that we can make it a little bit clearer for folks on what the historic preservation regulations are and how they can work with the city to just kind of make sure that everything is implemented correctly. We're also recommending promoting diversity in housing types. That was something that we heard throughout public engagement, that there was a need for a mix of housing types for all income levels, for all stages of life. We're recommending that mixed-use developments be considered in appropriate areas. Of course, context-sensitive, making sure that the architecture and site design are also reflective of the surrounding community. Simplifying the accessory dwelling unit regulations. That's a recommendation, just kind of take a look at that. That will probably take a little bit more of a deeper dive into your zoning code. Also taking a look at potential incentives like density bonuses for senior or affordable housing that meet certain criteria, or conducting a city-specific housing needs assessment. We realize that there is a housing study that is kind of reflective of what's needed in the county, but take a look really at what the city-specific needs are. That would be a recommended next step. Promoting context-sensitive infill for missing middle housing and identifying growth in areas only where infrastructure either exists or is planned for in the future. For transportation and mobility, we also have a framework map that shows off-site bicycle facilities. But some of the other highlights for this chapter, one of the things that we heard more often than not was something about parking. So what we are reflecting in here is the need for a parking study. So the recommendation is to definitely pursue that. Explore options for parking decks and other types of parking solutions. Possibly even partnering, doing a public-private partnership or partnering with a private entity in order to take a look at those options. Even taking a look at potential for a residential parking permit that would allow for some flexibility in enforcement situations. Instituting flexible pricing options so that you can kind of capitalize on the different options to kind of regulate the parking situation during high-level events. Taking a look at shared parking wherever possible. Also, just as a general policy, consider enacting a complete streets policy and taking a look at multimodal improvements that would be implemented during existing construction projects. So you're not having those projects kind of coming one after the other. They're kind of coming together so that you don't have the need to dig up something that you've just put in, for instance. Taking a look at creating gateways within the community and kind of strengthening those. There are opportunities for gateway signage that have been identified in here as well. And possibly pursuing a feasibility study for an additional vehicular bridge. That might be long-term, but taking a look at that and seeing what those requirements would be. And then important, you know, kind of promoting the active transportation system. Taking a look at where you can enhance your bikeways, your sidewalks, your interconnected paths and trails. Providing infrastructure on those trails. Bike wrecks at strategic locations, water fountains at strategic locations, possibly even bike repair stations so that people are encouraged and continue to use those facilities. Also taking a look at ways to increase ADA access to recreation areas, the river, and those trails. Also taking a look at a feasibility study for micro-mobility and ride share, or increasing the shuttle frequency within the area. Possibly even a pilot project with the county for taking a look at if there could be a fixed-rue transit option. Within community facilities and public infrastructure, kind of a few long-term considerations. One of the first that we identify in here is evaluating the feasibility of creating a paid fire department when that volunteer system is no longer sufficient for the city. Identified funding for community childcare. That was something that we heard in outreach and engagement, too. Something to support the families and also help that economic development and workforce development. And continuing to assess existing service capacities and planning for those infrastructure needs and upgrades. Collaboration to enhance access to medical services as well. Possibly even using community facilities as mobile health unit hubs. One of the things that we also incorporate in here is consider evaluating the feasibility of creating a community event space. There are some great community event spaces here, but what we've heard is that sometimes they're insufficient. They're small. They're... They may not be available as often as folks are desiring them to be. So taking a look at whether or not there could be an opportunity for an additional space and continuing to work with Galena Tourism to promote events. So we included an existing infrastructure map showing where the storm sewer, sanitary sewer, and power lines are currently. Now, this would have to also reflect... This is just reflecting what's current, but this would be updated as utilities are expanded and improved. Highlights within this section also include prioritizing resources for implementing the county water resources management plan. And then continuing to assess and upgrade those facilities that are in alignment with the capital improvement plan, the fire service study, and also funding sources. And then incorporating infrastructural redundancies and best management practices and new technologies into plans for these upgrades and expansions for these utilities. Kind of making sure that everything is modernized as they're upgraded. And of course, everything that we're talking about is respecting and reflective of the historic sites within the city. So everything has to have that preservation aspect to it as well. But one of the things we recommend is taking a look at the design guidelines to determine whether or not there can be modifications or exceptions for small-scale projects, to allow for those small-scale redevelopment projects. Are there certain criteria that could be not necessarily relaxed, but perhaps there are areas that folks don't... are areas that folks don't understand entirely that the city can maybe make a little bit clearer? And then conducted audit to eliminate regulatory conflicts between these different regulations and ordinances. Sometimes the ADA regulations may not speak exactly to the zoning and vice versa. This is really trying to get at making sure that we're respective again of the historic nature, but still allowing for ADA compliance wherever we can. That was one of the things that we heard from downtown businesses, that they really want to start incorporating more ADA access, but they're struggling a little bit with the historic regulations as well. Other highlights within this section, conducting a facility assessment, a five-year facility assessment as part of this capital improvement plan for upgrades, enhancements and expansions to facilities and public infrastructure and taking a look at possible additional river activation recreation opportunities, kayak and fishing, can we expand these access points for the public? And then connectivity, making sure that parks, recreation and trails, sidewalks, that infrastructure is connected to neighborhoods so folks can have that direct access without having to get in a car and drive to access nature. It's connected in a way that allows them to be active in nature. The final section within the comprehensive plan is the implementation section. Within that implementation section, we have how the plan is intended to be used, updated and reviewed. It also includes a recommendation for reviewing zoning and development controls to make sure again that these are all in alignment, that they're speaking to each other and supportive of each other. It also outlines cooperation and partnerships, potential partnerships to implement the plan and potential funding sources because of course anything that we recommend needs to be funded somehow. So there are opportunities that we include in here that might help with implementation of these projects over time. And then finally, we have an action matrix. This is intended to be kind of like a quick guide. It highlights all of the recommendations throughout the entire plan by category. This just gives you an example. It identifies whether or not it's a priority action, which would be something that includes a capital project, a policy or regulatory amendment, or strategies that would be prioritized to play the foundation for future planning implementation. Also includes timeframe, either short, medium, long-term, ongoing, or as development occurs. So it gives you an idea of what would be triggered with these action items. Is it something that can be accomplished in one to two years? Or is it something that might take capital improvements and therefore would have to be a five-year-plus plan? Or is it something that just can be implemented as an ongoing thing? Are you already starting to do these things, you just want to continue on with them? Or is it something that if the development happens, this is when it would be triggered? And then potential partners that can help you achieve these goals. So this is really the opportunity for us to make sure that we have incorporated everything that we've heard so far. And next steps would be to finalize the adoption draft based on input from the planning commission tonight and make that final presentation to city council for adoption. We just want to thank you again for the opportunity to help you with this very important project. It's been a wonderful experience for all of us. We've had a great time working with you all and we hope that you have also had a wonderful time with this process. I will leave you with the land use map and I apologize for going so fast on this. There we go.
Yep, thanks Jessica, very much appreciate the presentation. That closes the first item of new business, 25 PC-17. Next item of new business, 25 PC-18, the opening of the public hearing on the City of Galena Comprehensive Plan. Do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
I saw a motion.
You have a second.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, so at this time, what I'd like to do is anyone that will be speaking tonight, either in favor of or opposition of the Galena Comprehensive Plan, I will need you to sign in when you come up front. And then once you come up front, I will need you to state your name and address, please. We're going to do this first with the individuals that would like to say something in favor of, and then once that concludes, we'll do it in opposition of. So anyone that is going to be speaking, I need you to stand up and raise your right hand so Mr. Joe Knack can swear you in.
May I ask a question? No person. You're giving us an either-or, what if we're just asking questions on the program itself? So is this just strictly a yes or no?
Yes, Joe.
You're going to speak at the public hearing.
Yep.
I'm against or just a comment.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Looking for a comment section, right?
Oh, yes, because I'm not going to choose whether I'm for or against, I just want to ask some questions.
You can do that. There'll be an opportunity to make comments.
Because I've signed up on the thing over here.
Yeah.
Everybody's here to testify at the public hearing.
I guess I am.
Okay, thank you, Joe. So at this time, I'd like to ask if Mifsah Papelbaum would like to make any additional
Good evening, again, my name is Carrie Papelbaum, I'm representing House of Levine, and my previous presentation will serve as my testimony for this evening. I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Papelbaum. Okay, so at this time, let's take the folks that are in favor of. Anyone want to come up? Don't be shy.
Adam Johnson, 211 Forest Street. I'm in favor and against, so I will give you my in favor. I'm in favor that we're finally getting to this, it's about 15 years late. And I'm in favor of all development on the west side of Galena. I'm in favor of improving our economic base by seeking industry and business that is not related to tourism. I am in favor of expanding housing. I'm in favor of the city providing and assisting large housing developments by housing in the community.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of?
I'm Christine Baxter, 215 South Prospect Street, and I'm largely in favor of this as well. I think it's really a pretty marvelous job. My question sort of got a little answered because I only had one concern, the definition of transitional residential, because I live in that zone and transitioning sort of implies you're transitioning to something and it's like, wasn't very clear what that was. And forgive me if this was corrected in the new and improved version, because I could not call that up on my computer no matter how many times I tried. But in broad, the city should focus on infill development by encouraging contact-sensitive projects, blah, 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 introducing new housing options. I think that should read, if it doesn't, infill development by encouraging context-sensitive residential projects. Because right now, we have plenty of non-residential projects in our residential neighborhood. If I look to my north, one door down, I have a vacation rental. Two doors beyond that, I have a large inn. One door beyond that, I have a large B and B. One door beyond that, I have a large inn. If you think about it, if you don't really define that infill projects, especially if you're looking at the inn and the B and B being one door apart, it leaves it to me open to interpretation, and again, if this has been corrected, please forgive me, but it leaves it to me to interpretation to say, well, if the guy in the large inn decides to buy the house next door and ultimately buys out the other inn, it might open the door for contiguous development as a large hotel, that's three separate buildings. We've seen that be denied by the zoning board again, but I'd sure love to be able to say, here's the comprehensive plan and you can't do that because otherwise we won't have any neighborhoods. If I leave the other way, before I get to Route 20, I pass another B and B and another inn. So I mean, we just have to be very sensitive to the fact that we want our kids here, we want them to go to school. We've written checks, I think, to some of your kids for the Ulaia Art Poetry Awards and we want to keep that neighborhood. So if you, a great job all in all, but if you'll just be really careful about that transitional residential, which is a really odd term. Thank you.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do you understand the transitional residential now, or do you need that clarified?
I would love to hear what the new clarification is, because as it was written, it was fairly indiscernible.
Jessica, did that stay the same, the verbiage, the transitional residential?
Carrie.
Oh, Carrie, sorry. Carrie.
Thank you for your question, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Sorry, Carrie.
That's okay. So we do have that definition.
Okay.
Just have to find it in my notes.
Is that the one on page 23?
neighborhoods, but they include small-scale, single-family, two-family and multifamily housing reflecting architectural heritage and walkability in Galena's historic core. These areas are located near downtown Galena and along the Galena River where they serve as a bridge between historic neighborhoods and the broader community. While the new development opportunities are limited, context-sensitive infill and redevelopment should be prioritized to enhance these residential areas and investments in adaptive reuse, historic renovations and pedestrian-friendly infrastructure to enhance livability while maintaining the area's historic integrity and unique identity. So I think I understand what the concern is and that's with the infill and that redevelopment language not being specifically residential redevelopment language. I believe that is the concern.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak in favor of?
Thank you, Ben Pettie U, on behalf of Galena, Building 217 Summit Street. While we do support my statement as a support of a new Palincher, just to give you some stats, after reading the comprehensive plan, the Galena Area Emergency Medical Services District Response Area is approximately 172 square miles, nine townships, village of an anomaly, village of scales around the city of Galena. In compiling stats over the last two years, the city of Galena has 4.62 square miles of incorporated area, which accounts for 2.68% of our emergency response area. From May 1, 2023 through April 1, 2024, the incorporated area of the city accounted for 53.34% of our calls for emergency medical services. Last year, from May 1, 2024 through April 30 of this year, the incorporated area of the city accounted for 60.22% of our calls for emergency medical services. That's almost a 13% increase in one year. Done with the stats, I'm going to page 6 of the draft, under Community Services, and I'm quoting, "The city is responsible for essential services like law enforcement, fire protection and public works. There's no mention of emergency medical services. Historically, across the board, emergency medical service has not been considered an essential service." We're trying to work with that at state level, whether it ever raises. As a volunteer-based department, evolving needs, present changes especially given Galena's aging population, which may lead to higher demand for emergency medical services." This is under the fire department heading. Then two paragraphs later, it's mentioned again, I paraphrase, "The Galena Area Emergency Medical Service is a volunteer-based life support service that plays a critical role in providing prompt, around-the-clock ambulance service." You know, that's pretty much it. Now mentioning, in the firefighter, fire department portion, mentioning a higher demand for emergency medical services in the fire department paragraphs gives the impression they are responsible for providing this service. While they assist the ambulance on various medical calls, this is very misleading. In closing, Galena Area EMS District believes in the development and growth of Galena and the surrounding communities. However, emergency medical services need to be considered an essential service and given the resources and funding to support the increasing calls and add demand. I would not like to see the Mid Country Tourism develop an advertising slogan, "Come to Galena for bring your own ambulance." I appreciate the time, thanks very much, it was an interesting read and I look forward to moving forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other individuals that would like to speak in favor of?
I'm like the others, I pluses and minuses, but where this should be, I do have a copy for you folks.
Your name first.
I'm going to write in there. My name is Bill Rosas and my wife and I live at 418 Harrison Street, Galena, and I want to discuss the section titled Limited Short-Term Rentals found on page 44 of the draft. Specifically, I have just three comments to make, and this is just off my text a little bit. I recently was involved in both the zoning commission and also with the city council, and what I found was that the comprehensive plan has a big factor in determining whether or not an item may or may not go through. So sometimes the wording in that document is very important. So specifically, I'm, under the recommendations section on page 44, the first bullet item, I believe the word downtown should be struck. This would avoid any ambiguity regarding the commercial areas versus residential areas. As it previously, as it presently reads, it might be argued that the plan is silent on enforcing the moratorium of only 20 STRs in a residential area. So I think that we're talking about the whole city and not just downtown. If the committee agrees with me, my second item would be that on page 96 in the matrix, the word downtown should also be struck in item 6.25. But I'd also refer you back to page 44, under the limited short-term rentals in the little brief description above the recommendations. I would like this sentence added because it talks about limiting the residential to only 20 STRs and I believe 75 for commercial. But there's also a third factor and that is density. And I think that there needs to be a sentence put in there similar to this that would read further, "In order to limit congestion or saturation of STRs in residential areas, the city only permits five STRs within a 25.83 acre circular area." That's already in code, but I think it should be highlighted in here as part of the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor of? Anyone else to speak in favor of?
Brad Petersburg, 5060 South Galena Road. I have been helping to promote and develop, uh, a blackjack watershed plan in the southeast side of town. Watership planning, possibly a new road between Blackjack Road and Highway 20 and some related developments, workforce housing, potentially remote parking and shuttle service, chartered care facility, trail between Horseshoe Mound, Galena, et cetera. Anyway, I did submit some comments related to various topics, um, related to that, but I want to focus on one that I guess I would encourage you to consider an amendment to the plan on page 50, uh, that's related to traffic and parking, and under it is section congestion. There's specific, um, reference to a couple of other projects, uh, the bridge across the Galena River and the Galena bypass, a four lane, um, around Galena. I think it is worthwhile to specifically also include the Blackjack Road Realignment Project. I know you've spent months and months on developing this plan and done a great job, but it's only just very recently that the county voted unanimously in support of a memorandum of understanding between the county and the city. The city council as well voted unanimously to support that MOU to pursue a collaborative development of that road. And as Carrie had indicated, um, you know, specifically listing projects like that can really help out with funding, and I know with the city and the county, you're both going to be seeking some grant funding to help make this happen. So, perhaps it would be worthwhile if you could specifically reference the Blackjack Road Realignment Project on page 50, and then also as an action item on page 97. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else to speak in favor of?
Pat Smith, 712 Park Alley, Galena. I am in favor of this, and I just had some gentle comments or questions about this. Our industrial park on the west side of town, I mean, you could drive through it if you'd liked, you might miss it. I know there are some good businesses out there, but to expand industrial park, you know, when my husband was on the county board and city council, it's hard to get land out there because it's farmland that joins that, and how are you going to purchase or get more land to increase industrial park? This housing and workforce housing, what is that going to be? Cottages, townhouses, how will it, will it all be similar? And where is the workforce coming from? People, you can see businesses downtown that are not open as often as they would like to be because they don't have enough help. So, I don't know where we get that workforce. And, and I would be interested in what that housing looks like. It's, it sounds to me like it's army barracks or something. And I, and just, uh, yes, we might gain money from all this stuff that's coming in, but also it's going to be an added cost to the county and the city for additional plow, snow plowing, more people to take care of the roads. And who's responsible? Is it county or city? Because at one point, somebody talked about mixing more of the area out there into the city limits, and, you know, there could be revenue coming in, but there's going to be costs to this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Anyone else to speak in favor of? Okay, we'll switch over to anyone that opposes the effort or has questions that oppose the effort?
My name is Paul Sapira, I'm living with Wayne, Galena. And my major concern, I, I'm not really against the project, it's just I was trying to raise a question. Uh, my major concern is natural resources, and I'm obsessed with water uses. And I see how terrible our city is dealing with our water sources, resources. And the one thing about this particular program is, is projecting out 20 and 30 years into the future. Where is our water going to come from in 10 years? And we really, really need to understand groundwater usage, the, uh, study on how many people during the BNR area. Climate change is going to put another stress on water usage. So, I'm, my disappointment in this, uh, initially is simply that there is no real, uh, direction as to natural resource usage. This is a nice program, everything is, is nice, but we really have to understand how all these nice dreams are going to happen if we run out of our natural resources. And the other thing that's going to stress our natural resources, and I wish this particular, uh, plan would show it, how is the Parker project going to affect this? This is going to put a tremendous stress on our resources, and there is unfortunately no, uh, indication here how the city would grow with its resources again to accommodate a project such as the Parker. So, it seems like good old Parker is always being ignored because so many people in power are in favor of it. But we really have to address for our future what needs that we're going to have to meet. And, uh, and that's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeannie, you're next.
I'm expected to speak in a microphone. Hi, I'm Jeannie. Um, I live at 510 Gear Street. For people who don't know me, I grew up here, but I moved to Montana for 25 years. Um, so coming back here, um, from an, a state that has so much public land, it made me really fear for all of the land around here as unprotected. It could go to the Parker project at any time. And my biggest concern, and I, I came down here to understand this more, and I really don't have much of an understanding, but I feel as someone from here who grew up as, um, with the landscape, um, being such an integral part of my life, um, and, um, creating the person that I am, that the landscape is really important to me. And I see this Parker project, and I see what Brad is trying to do, um, with this connecting road. And I know that they are not, um, allegedly not related, but they do have the same architect. And I just think of that road and this workforce housing to me as somebody who's from here. That's basically supplying workforce for the Parker project. And I just want to remind people, and I do believe that all of you and people that work for the city have the best intentions for Galena, but I think it's getting spiraled out of control where someone like me, who's been gone for 20 years, can see what I left and what I'm coming back to, and how the landscape itself is such a part of Galena's history, the wildlife here is a part of Galena's history. Frank Einsweller worked so hard to protect Galena, and I feel like that's why people come here. And I don't want to see it turn into, like, I don't want East Galena to look like West Galena. And I, I know that housing is an issue, and you're trying to figure out a way to mitigate that, but I know that we have hundreds of Airbnb's downtown. I mean, maybe that's, that's just what I'm pulling out of my, out of the air, but it's just, there's got to be a better way to mitigate it than a new road from Blackjack to Highway 20, all of this new housing. It just seems wrong to me. It seems like there are so many people like me that are overlooked. Like, I'm from here, I don't benefit from, I, I mean, there are reasons that I benefit from tourism, yes, good restaurants, bars. But it's like, I, I don't profit from tourism, and I don't, I know that you're looking out in a sense for me, but I don't, I don't see much for me in this plan, especially with the Parker project and this whole new area that's under Horseshoe Mound that is, I'm still trying to understand. I mean, Horseshoe Mound is considered a dark sky area, and I'm always thankful of all the woods along Highway 20 when I drive there, and I know it's always going to be up for grabs. I mean, I took it for granted, living in Montana, working for the Forest Service as long as I did, and it's, I just feel like as residents, it's up to us to look also out for the landscape and the, the wildlife that's here. I mean, we have one of the most biodiverse counties in northern Illinois. This is a, a migratory corridor for migratory birds. We've just been designated a bird city, and I just, I just would hope that the city would move toward more conservation efforts and try to look out for the landscape. So, I didn't really plan anything, but that's just why, I, I feel emotional about it, and I just, since I'm from here, I feel like it's important for me to let everyone know how I feel.
Uh, next individual?
Joeline Louie. I'm kind of a trifecta, so I have 2170 North Blackjack Road, live at 1346 South Blackjack Road, and I am involved in tourism because I handle vacation rentals. My biggest concern, I like the development, the improvement, we need to bring families back to the area, again, adjoining with you, west side of Galena, where the kind of business industry. East side, there's problems for a couple of things. First of all, the Highway 20 corridor is a nightmare if you talk to guests, residents, especially the Fourth Street Junction. Adding access out further on Highway 20, I believe is going to cause the same catastrophe that the hospital without turning lanes caused. Now, we're just going to flip it. Um, I also am involved with the Parker being surrounding my other property, um, which is in a flood zone, so it kind of decimates our property value because now we're surrounded by commercial. We can never be bought as commercial because of flood zone. Um, that's the personal side. From the tourism side, Galena is over saturated. I hear it from guests all the time. My return guests have said, we're not coming anymore, it's not going up. You have to walk too far for elderly people, um, there's not enough seats in restaurants, all of those particular things. And I guess my opposition to this is I'm not sure why the Marine Hospital and the Parker project had to be involved in this development. I know it's a 25 year plan, however, it kind of seems back sided to get them under the table to be able to improve the project. The, I guess, actually, the highest concern is EMS and Fire Department. I live at 1346, which is, you know, three miles from Chester. On a good day, it would take them 18 to 32 minutes to get to my house. I understand that by living rural. If you've ever tried to get back into Galena from Blackjack Road in a tourism where traffic has backed up past, that can be detrimental, not to mention it's volunteer. My dad was the president of the Fire Department for many years, Dan Louie. It's been volunteer, it's essential in this area. Parker, they should have to have their own fire EMS, just like territory has established out there, you know, they have the fire for calls. I guess those are my concerns without having anything presented with all the, the sections and things. I just, I want Galena developed, I just think we're kind of maxed out on the tourism side. So, even though that's kind of what I do for a living, you still have to cap it at some point to keep it. I'm afraid we're turning into Wisconsin Dells. I guess.
Dana Kerlik, 401 Bogus Street. I kind of wanted to add on to my concerns for the development on 20 or the potential development. I feel, Galena, any community is a microcosm of what's going on in this country and the world, but obviously it can speak to what I see and where I live. And we are very quickly becoming a community of have and have nots. We are focusing on a few people, business owners, that are making money on the backs of people that are barely being paid for their services, which I feel is exploitation, cannot afford to live here, or if they can, they're working for, cannot afford to avail themselves to the amenities that we have downtown that we are told that we should be thankful to have. But if you can't afford them, what's the use of them to most of the people that, again, live and work here? Workforce housing, the connotation on that is just very disturbing for me. It's not meant to build somebody up, it's going to be low paying jobs, that's why we're calling it workforce housing. We're not calling it beautiful developments. So, these are going to be people that are going to make minimum wage at the very best, and again, not being able to avail themselves to what people want in their life. People don't want to have to just work, go home, wake up, and do the same thing every single day. And that's what we are finding ourselves here. Now, this is out of my lanes, I'm not an expert on this. If you ask me something in finance or mortgage, I can probably be more clear. But obviously, people in the position that you are all in or city council should be availing yourself to people that can work with us to find industries or other developments that will come in here to pay better wages for people. So, young people that continue their education here, that we just put in the money for the high school and the grammar school, they're going to stay here. Why? Because it's a beautiful place to live, we have services that maybe they can pay to go to, their families are here, but if we don't figure this out, it's all for nothing. The older people are going to die, we're all going to die, younger people can't afford to live here, and you're just going to have very wealthy people. That is not how you sustain a community. Thank you.
Okay, next individual?
Adam Johnson, 211 Fourth Street. So, again, to talk about the east side developments, I think, uh, the president said it very well, we should be developing where we don't have the infrastructure. We don't have the infrastructure on the east side. We have a small, uh, Horseshoe Mound reservoir. I don't think they've planned, when they put that reservoir in, for triple the amount of housing that we're talking about. So, I've seen nothing on this about, uh, providing for water. I'm already very nervous about the Parker project. I still don't know if we're, if we are watering the vineyard. Uh, so, to take our small, uh, reservoir on the, on the east side and try to develop these major projects on the east side is going to really stress our infrastructure. And then again, having so called worker housing on the east side and remote parking on the east side, I think is very short sighted. Again, I live on the east side, on a, on a weekend, you're lucky to have somebody wave you in on the right turn off Park Avenue. We're not going to be able to sustain a bunch of people living on the east side and going to work downtown, going to work someplace else. They don't have stores, they don't have, uh, regular facilities. You know, the west side is where the schools are, it's where the stores are, it's where the hospital is, it's where all the services are, it's where the Fire Department is, it's where the EMS is. So, when we put a stress on the east side, like we're providing here, we're going to stress those services, and most people are not going to be well, well served. And so, I think having, and, and I, I was at the city council meeting when the, the city decided to go ahead with the partnership agreement with the county. And what we were told, and what they were told, was that that was an agreement that pertains strictly to the road, and that we weren't going to look at developments until we have the road. Well, come here, and we've already got the development shown on the comprehensive plan. We don't have a road, we don't have water, we don't have the services yet. So, I would like to see all that scrubbed off this and come back in five years when you have the road, when you've figured out the water, when you've figured out the services. Because to put it on there now, what you do is you disincentivize people who we want to build on the west side. If there's this possible development on the east side, then that's already in competition with people who should be building where we always wanted them. with people who should be building where we always wanted them to, on the west side. So Parker isn't a deal. Parker, God willing, goes down in courts and gets scrubbed. I want to see that big red spot go back to green. So I would like to see two maps. Two maps. Since you're doing this while we're all in court over the Parker project, I'd like to see the alternative map for when the city loses their lawsuit, so that we can feel like we're all supported, that if it goes one way or the other, we know where it's going. But if the Parker loses, and I got a big red spot where I don't have infrastructure, I don't have any way to get there, we know you, there's no road access, we're commercial. So what's that commercial going to be if it's not Parker? It's going to be something that's going to stress our services. So I would like to see two maps. Thank you very much.
Anyone else to speak in opposition of comprehensive plan for Galena? Okay. At this time, I will offer Carrie an opportunity to come back up and respond to any of the comments or questions that were made. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you. I think the only thing that I would like to say is, it, there seems to be a little bit of confusion as to what workforce housing is defined as within the plan itself. Workforce housing is intended to provide more of those missing middle options that are available for more income levels. It's not a type of housing where it's intended to bring in a specific type of workforce, and it's not specifically stating what kind of housing that is. It's intended to provide just that additional housing type to get at more of the, the broad range of income levels and different stages of life that the housing types would allow for. So it's, if you want to think about it as missing middle housing, it's anything that would be available from anyone who's just starting out to anybody who's working at any stage of their, their career and into retirement. So the workforce housing, if that's, if that's very concerning for folks, we have missing middle that's also in there. We talk about sustainability and affordability. If that's something that we should just stick to, the missing middle, sustainability and affordability, we will be willing to make that change, if so directed by the planning.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open it back up for anybody that would have additional comments towards what Ms. Jessica just mentioned, Carrie mentioned. Okay. Hearing none. At this time, I'd like to see if we have a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is 25 PC-19, discussion and possible action on a recommendation to this Galena City Council regarding adoption of the comprehensive plan. Do I have a motion from the Planning Commission to either approve or disapprove what was presented by House Levine today? And it could be with adjustments, too. Remember that, that happens during the discussion.
I'll move to approve the plan as presented today.
Okay, do I have a second?
I will second.
Okay, Mary Beth, do you take roll call?
Do you want to have discussion first?
Yeah, yeah, probably.
Do, do we need to close the public hearing first? We did that.
We did.
Yeah, we did that.
You want to start?
Yeah, I mean, there's, everybody, thank you for everything tonight. There's a lot of good, in favor or in opposition. It was all good information. I agree, there needs to be more emergency services on the east side if our bridge has an accident on it, something happens on the east side. You know, that's something we've talked about as a, as a committee many times. The workforce housing, I think that's, I think Carrie mentioned, that's just kind of a, a term that maybe has a negative connotation to it. I mean, personally owning two businesses in town that have service industry employees, I know that housing is an issue in Galena for people that work in the restaurants, in the hotels, in the, basically up and down Main Street, which is the heartbeat of Galena. There's not a lot of, not a lot of housing for those folks. I, I deal with it. You know, I wish we could all find every employee we want to. I'm down eight employees personally across two businesses. Trying to find people, and one of the common things I hear from people is, "Well, I'm in Dubuque, it's, you know, I, I would move over there, but there's not anywhere to live." So I know that's a real problem personally, but I, I know workforce housing, I know we, the word barracks was used, and I know that's what it sounds like. But I think overall, this plan from House Levine is a very solid plan. I don't think we need to completely intermix it with all the other hot topics we have in town right now. I know there's some overlap, but I think overall, this is a, a good thing for Galena overall.
So Matt, just to be clear, are you thinking then the word workforce housing, we should change that verbiage to the other verbiage that Carrie mentioned? Would that be one of your recommendations?
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, it's just words.
Okay. And then, would I be reading too much into it with what you said under the recommendations for the community facilities and public infrastructure piece to have a recommendation added to do a study on the feasibility of emergency services on the east side?
Absolutely.
Okay. Want to go next?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a solid plan that encompasses a lot of different things, and I appreciate all the concerns on both sides of the equation here, but there's, there's a lot of things moving forward that I think, you know, it's a framework with which to move forward and start to consider things in the future. It's not a statement or a testament on one thing or the other. It just allows the opportunity to continue to develop. We all love Galena, I grew up here, I have a very vested interest in this place. I think it's wonderful, and I, I really think it's going to open the door for us to move to the next generation. I agree with you, the workforce housing connotation maybe sounds bad on paper, but there is a real struggle for your average person to live in this town at this point. I mean, I get this all the time with people that want to come here and rent. It's impossible to find anything unreasonable. So, you know, we're going to get a start to that, and hopefully, we can fill the seats. Excuse me.
Any, any recommendations that you would have that we would want to put forth? We'd have to amend our, we'd have to make a new, an amended, but...
I think, I think to your point, the services on the east side would be good to explore, reservoir, you know, abilities. I mean, Adam brings up a very good point. What's the availability of services and how would that develop in the future? I mean, you have to have something there to develop in order for it to really understand what we can support. And I know this allows for things, you know, like, personally, living on the east side for a very long time, I think the Blackjack Road corridor was a nice idea, and living in the neighborhood, that it would bisect and cut off. I mean, I think it puts a lot less strain in that area and allows for some future development, regardless of what it is, we have to figure that out.
Okay. And workforce housing, you also liked that idea, changing that back?
Yeah, I mean, I think it carries with it kind of a negative tone, so...
Okay, I can see that. Is there a...
Oh, I thought there was a lot of really good points brought up. I like all of them. Thank you, everybody, for sharing. I do want to make sure that we have a mention of EMS and emergency services. I think that was a good, a good catch there. Workforce housing, as I think most of us think of the definition, was different than kind of the definition Carrie gave. I don't know what a better term is. I wish I had one, because it, right, it's not workforce housing, it's housing for everyone. It, you know, it's really what it needs to be. I was trying, and I apologize, I was on my phone a lot, but as people were bringing things up, I'm trying to match kind of what I'm hearing to what was in the plan. There was a lot of good discussion around the water usage and protection of public lands and about our infrastructure. And I, this plan is such an overarching guideline that I think it was addressed when I look, you know, it talks about utilizing current water resource management plan, doing assessments of our infrastructure. So I think a lot of those things were covered, probably not in the detail I know what some people wanted to see, but I think that is the next step that happens kind of under the plan. This sets, sets the basic idea up here, and then we do deep dives further on. So I think a lot of that was covered. I apologize if I missed some things that weren't. I guess you probably just need what changes I wanted, and I think it was the EMS services.
Okay. Okay.
Maybe that made sense.
There you go. It did, it made complete sense. So again, I want to thank everybody that talked in favor of and in opposition of, and the questions and the suggestions. We definitely heard you. Obviously, we couldn't catch everything throughout our, our months of working on this, so it was good to hear from a large group of people. I agree with my, my co-partners here on the committee. The workforce housing, I would want to amend it, to change the verbiage. The emergency services, I'd like that a recommendation to do a study on the east side. I love the catch on the EMS services, I want to call that out for certain. The other item I had is on, on this page, there is a discrepancy and a couple of things that I would like to change and talk to my committee folks about this. This area here, I think, should go back to green, based on what it is. This red dot should go to blue because it's the health department, and that's a public space. And this orange dot should go to yellow. Those would be my recommendations. They've got the wrong one. This is actually the, this is the health department. This should be, uh, yellow, sorry. I got to switch those two. This should be, um, blue, this should be yellow. This one stays red because that's the Merkel Engineering Building.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so we got a, an apologies, Carrie, I didn't catch that before. But my recommendation would be to also put this back to green, the yellow part. Sorry, what's that?
Is that in between the reds, you want to turn back to green?
Yep. Let me stand up. I don't know if you can see me. This area. That's it.
We're just trying to get a bearing.
No, no, that's okay. I was trying to write notes fast here, so apologize, folks. I also thought it was interesting, and we definitely have to talk about this one, but when we actually had our discussions as a, as a committee, we actually mentioned that second, because it is a traffic jam with Blackjack and 20, we actually mentioned putting a second one.
Yeah, somewhere along.
Before this other stuff came up, which is ironic.
Yeah.
And that is not in the recommendations on page 51. I don't want to put it, you know, this Highway 20 stuff specifically, but I think there should be a recommendation somewhere here that says, "We recommend doing a study for a potential secondary passing." I don't want to reference any other stuff that's going on, that's not our job. But since we had brought it up many, many moons ago, I think that recommendation should be on here for a secondary access point from Blackjack to Highway 20. I think that took care of my notes. So do, do we agree with, I want to make sure we agreed with my items or didn't agree? Do we want to talk about them?
No.
Okay. So, Joe, I need a little assistance. We need to do roll call for this, and then we need to make a new motion with all these changes?
No, there's a motion to approve the plan. It's like, there should be a motion to make the amendments.
Okay.
Any amendments you want made, then a roll call board on each amendment, then a new motion.
Okay, a roll call for each amendment separately? Okay, very good. Can I count on you?
Yeah.
I'll help you, I'll help you. Okay, so I need a motion for the first amendment.
So I move to add an emergency services study on the east side amendment to our previous motion.
My second.
Okay. Mary Beth, would you take roll call, please, on the adding an emergency services study for the east side?
Mom?
Yes.
I'm Tyler.
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I move to make an amendment to change the workforce housing verbiage. You didn't want missing middle?
Affordable housing.
To affordable housing?
I mean, even, I know.
Affordable goes...
This is the struggle.
To, for missing housing.
To verbiage that's not called workforce or affordable.
Or affordable?
Yes.
I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, you know, we're losing the crowd, but it, it ultimately ends up being single-person housing. Yeah, you can't say that. You know, I mean, I mean, single, single-family housing, single... At the end of the day, it's additional housing.
Diverse.
Yeah. I mean, at the end of the day, it's additional housing that we need in town, so I don't, I don't even know.
Changing from workforce housing to additional housing.
There you go.
All right, from workforce housing to additional housing.
Got it?
Second.
Okay, Mary Beth, there's a motion for an amendment to change the word workforce housing to additional housing.
Additional housing.
And we have a second, if you please take roll.
Yes, yes.
I'm Tyler.
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Mom and Andy.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I make a motion to add EMS to the emergency services.
On page 60. On page 60, in the emergency services section at the top, and I think we should take out, remember where they talked about the fire department and they took about the emergency services? They don't do that.
Right.
So needed amendment.
Okay.
To add EMS to the, to the top.
Okay, to add EMS to the top.
And remove the specifics about, you know, the elderly and all the emergency calls, where it only portrays the fire department because that's for everybody.
Did you get that? Okay.
The emergency services paragraph on page 60, how's that? Do I have a second?
Second.
Mary Beth, you tell me when you're ready to take roll. Okay?
Yes.
Mom and Andy?
Yes.
Mom?
Yes.
I'm Tyler.
Yes. And I make a motion to change the map on page 25 by switching the red and the blue and turning the yellow to green.
Yep. On the West Side. Or East Side, yes.
Turn the health department to blue.
Turn the health department clock to blue.
Turn Merkel to red.
Leave Merkel red.
Red, okay.
Turn the blue one to yellow.
Turn the yellow, let's fly the blackjack road border into green.
Yes.
I'm colorblind. I have these printed off in grayscale, so I'm going to abstain from this one.
Right.
Second.
I abstain.
Mary Beth, will you please take roll call?
Yes. Monahan?
Yes.
Mom?
Abstain.
I'm Swire.
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Okay, then we need a secondary access.
Oh. And I make a motion to add secondary access to the blackjack area somewhere along Highway 20.
At the... Yeah, do we have official?
To, yeah, what's official? What's the page?
It is...
To look into adding.
Right.
We would like to add to the recommendation section on page 51.
All right.
A study.
Exploring.
Exploring secondary access from blackjack to Highway 20.
All right. Get that. Okay.
I abstain.
Mary Beth, would you please take roll call?
Mom?
Yes.
I'm Swire.
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes. Okay, now, do we have to do the motion to do everything together?
After the amendment, yes.
Okay. Now that we have made all those motions and roll calls for each of the amendments, Mary Beth, would you take a roll call for the original?
I'm Swire.
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Finally, for those that are left in the room, we do have time for open discussion that's not pertaining to the Galena comprehensive plans. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay, hearing none. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion?
I motion to adjourn this meeting.
My second.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a nice day.
Just to tell you something, workforce housing is anybody that is working or in the workforce.
Oh, I know.
Everybody gets to say this.
Oh, I know, but...
It's for people, yeah, for people that work. Affordable housing has that connotation because I have looked it up and studied.
No, we talked about this about...
Yeah, and every time it comes up, it's always an issue, but it's like...
No one likes it.
Nobody likes it.
It just never seems to need. I know, I know.
Housing title? I'm tired of it, and people be like, "We don't want everybody over 65."
Well, yeah.